Everybody really appreciates us doing it.
Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Hilda Bailey, Associate Pastor, Clinton Tavern Accolade, Umeed Zion Church.
Raise your heads with me, please. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth, who has set thy glory above the heavens. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this city council meeting. Oh God, ask your blessings, Lord, upon the business of this meeting. And we thank you, Father, for those who serve in different capacities, Lord. Throughout the city, there are some who stand out in the spotlight. And Father, there are some behind closed doors that some may not know about. But Father, we thank you for them too. I ask you to bless Hickory as a whole. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a special presentation this evening. I'm going to call on Lieutenant Vidal Syke from our police department, and he's going to present a recognition that the city recently won.
Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. Tonight, I just want to recognize some of the individuals at the police department that is doing an outstanding job. Last time I've been up here, we spoke about street crimes unit, and of course, we're going to speak about the street crimes unit again, on how well they're actually doing. Just a little background, the Street Crimes and Addiction Unit at the Hickory Police Department began in 2006. Their primary objective was to disrupt gang-related activity through proactive enforcement, education, prevention, intervention, and suppression. The unit is led by Sergeant Jeff Medley. As I call their names, I'm going to ask for them guys to come up behind me here, or beside me, either way. Sergeant Jeff Medley, he's the supervisor over the street crimes unit. Master Police Officer Mike Chris, he is currently in Afghanistan with the US Army, so he'll be gone for a little while from us. Master Police Officer Daniel Orders, and Officer Gordon Kinnon. The street crime unit varies from week to week with their schedule, which allows these officers to work based on what is happening in the city of Hickory. So they don't have a specific schedule. Sir Melly, he sort of looks through the reports and things to see what's going on, and he guides his schedule to the needs of the city as time goes on. They consistently work one weekend, one week night each weekend. They focus on high crime and gang areas in the city. By having a regular presence in these areas, the officers are able to deter crime, but also make arrests before a situation get out of control as needed. The street crimes unit is a part of a countywide gang task force, which we have the only, I would call, professional gang unit, what some like to call within the county, Street Crimes and Addiction Unit. I know we don't like to call it the gang unit, but that's their primary focus. And with this unit, the official, their artificial gang unit within the Catawba County, they're the go-to unit, as we call them, at the Hickory Police Department. Anything that goes on, we sort of shy everything over to them, and then these guys handle a lot of that for the police department. Presentations, anything that's going on, whether it's gang-related, or street crimes-related, we have these guys actually present to it. They are also the ones that are in charge of the call-ins for the police department. I know last time, we had Charles Mackey up here. These guys are the ones that are actually out there arresting these folks and getting them involved in that program. This year, they have won, through the State of North Carolina Gang Association, they have won the gang unit of the year for the State of North Carolina. And that's what we'd like to recognize these guys for tonight, not just for local departments, but throughout the state of North Carolina. These guys have done an outstanding job, and we appreciate their hard work and dedication that they have been doing. And just like to bring them up here in front of you guys and just recognize them for tonight. This is the actual plaque that they have received from the gang association, and I'll pass it around here in a second. And I'll just read it off for you. It's from North Carolina Investigative, Gang Investigators Association. Be it known in the recognition of special achievements and recognition commensurate with the role of criminal justice professional and personal devotion in service to the people of North Carolina. The president of the Board of Achievements and Recognition of the State of North Carolina Gang Investigators Association, through the authority invested in them as leading authority in the criminal street gangs in the state, do hereby award Hickory Police Department Street Crimes and Addiction Unit this gang unit of the year. And that was last month, we actually went to a meeting down in Burnsville where all these guys were presented in front of the association. So I appreciate you guys.
Sergeant Medley, didn't you have a speech?
Speech?
That's the little inside joke we have with Sergeant Medley and his speeches. The next recognition, I'd like to just give a brief background. Sarah Nelson, she's the Gang of One Coordinator at the Police Department. She joined HPD in September of 2010 after working six years with the Department of Juvenile Justice as a juvenile court counselor. One main reason for her wanting to become a Gang of One Coordinator, she wanted to work with the youth before they got involved in gangs and legal trouble. Sarah, I always tell her, and I always pat her on the back, but she always says, "Lieutenant Syke, don't always pat me on the back. I don't care about doing this. I love doing this job," which is what I like so much about her. She's responsible for providing gang awareness presentations to the community. She has completed presentations at middle schools, high schools for faculty and students, local colleges, Alexander Juvenile Detention Center, the Hickory Police Department Citizen Police Academy, mental health agencies, DSS. In January 2013, she updated the presentation to include current information, videos, and reference youth would be able to relate to. Sarah has attended multiple community events where she utilizes a display board, handout brochures, and coloring books, and interacts with the community about what they do, or can be involved within helping to decrease gang activity. Since there is a link between bullying and gangs, she created a bullying presentation that she uses in the schools and for parents at conferences. She facilitated two weeks, two weekly after-school programs during the 2012-2013 school year. One after-school group was held at the Ross Center, the community building on Ridgecrest Hickory Housing property. Children who resided at Ridgecrest, who are ages six to seventeen, were allowed to attend. Sarah would open the center up for the children for two hours each week, and then help them with their homework or play games with them. The second after-school group was held at the Ridgeview Recreation Center as a partnership between HPD, Gang of One, and Hickory Park and Recreation. This group was open to all youth in Hickory in ages grade six to twelve. Sarah and other Hickory police officers met with the youth for two hours each week to help them with their homework and play games. One of the officers helped a high school senior write her personal essay for college application, and she was accepted into five different schools. This group was brand-new for the 2012-2013 year, but while this group was small, non-youth attended the overall course. It has continued support from the HPD and Hickory Parks Recreation to be held 2013-2014 school year. In September 2012, Sarah partnered with David Packt officers, who are assigned to the Ridgeview area for a backpack project. School supplies were donated to HPD for local businesses, and Sarah sorted, inventoried, and organized all the supplies. She, three officers, and a lieutenant went out on two different days and delivered a backpack to the youth within the Ridgeview area. Sarah is a point of contact for the people in the community to call with questions. She maintains positive relations with the school resource officers, not only in Hickory Public School System, but also in Catawba County School Systems. She is a member of the Catawba County Juvenile Prevention Council, where she serves as an outreach committee chairperson since 2012. She has also been elected to serve a second term, 2013-2014. Sarah is a member of the Save Kids of Catawba County Coalition, is responsible for gang prevention and bullying prevention component also. What Sarah does, she does a lot with her gang unit also, and throughout the Gang Investigators Association. She was nominated the civilian of the year for North Carolina for the Gang Association. So I'd like to thank her for her job that she does at the police department. And her plaque is also from the North Carolina Gang Investigators Association. Greetings, be it known in recognition of special achievements and recognition commensurate with the role of criminal justice professional and personal devotion in service to the people of North Carolina. The president and the board of achievements and recognition of the North Carolina Gang Investigators Association, through the authority invested in them as leading authority in criminal street gangs in the state, do hereby award Sarah Nelson, Gang of One Coordinator, Hickory Police Department, civilian of the year. Thank you, Sarah. Next concludes my recognitions. Thank you.
Let's see, we have Charlotte Williams here from LR. And you, could you tell us a little bit about your students who are here?
We have our HCS 318 Community Studies class. This is a class where we learn about different types of communities, and especially looking at the city, the degree of how we, and actually even the state, in terms of government structure and how decisions are made. Hopefully, they've learned how things get done, how the city is run, how we operate. Thank you.
Great, okay. And the scouts, could we get some scouts to introduce themselves and tell us what troop you're from?
My name is Dylan Cody. I'm from Troop 234 at First Larnmouths Church here in Hickory, and I'm here for a citizenship in the community, wear a badge. And...
I'm Robert Poville with Troop 345 on the Assistant Scout Master. And we've got two scouts here with Communications, wear a badge.
Okay. Did that include the back row?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all, all of you, for being here. Any persons requesting to be heard? Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That is unanimous. Mr. Seaver is not present tonight. Motion to reaffirm or ratify on second reading?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Ms. Patton, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to be approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mr. Lael, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. So we're already over on page three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. New business, first item of business is a public hearing, and I'll ask the city's principal planner, Mr. Cal Overby, to come to the podium and present that item to council prior to opening the public hearing.
Take it, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Wright, Councilman Mr. Crone. Item before you, request for a voluntary satellite annexation from Venture Properties Five LLC. The entity is requesting to annex a piece of property located at 2615 Springs Road Northeast. As you notice, this is recently subdivided from 2633, which is basically, you have Shell's Barbecue and a single-story brick home in its development site between those two properties. The annexation area is approximately 1.65 acres in size. It's basically immediately ejected to another annexation area, but is also 150 feet from the nearest area. It's kind of a little spotted little area there with respect to the annexation area. The request petition is in order to obtain sewer service from the city of Hickory. Currently, property is vacant, but it's currently under construction for the site of a 12,500-square-foot retail building. Can you give me kind of some areas where we have? This is the property you questioned here. The yellow area shown ETJ, this will be showing our current city boundary. Respect the zone, as you can see, pretty much the corridor along Springs Road is on Commercial Corridor, which is a commercial zoning designation for the city of Hickory. The area shown in the yellow color is residential. This is another type of residential, and this is a different type of commercial zone, which is typically located in convergence of two major intersections. And this will be the old photograph of the area showing surrounding land uses. This is basically a fresh air galaxy. This will be Burger King, Shell's Barbecue is in this area. Again, the single-story brick home is here, and this will be the development site at this point here. Residential in these areas back here, up in this area, more vacant property, and more commercial as you travel through the northeast on Springs Road. With that, staff has done the analysis of the requested annexation and found that it meets the requirements necessary for annexation under general statutes, and also the adequate public services are available to serve the property should the city council vote to annex the property. With that being said, I will close and say staff does recommend approval, and I'll be more happy to answer questions.
Do we know who the tenants are going to be?
Yes, sir. It's a Dollar General store. And it's, they've got it in the dry now, and it's been, it's been brick. I think it's been brick this afternoon when I passed by.
What's the county zoning?
Sir?
It's now in the county, right?
No, sir. It was under ETJ previously.
ETJ, okay.
Thank you.
During the public hearing, we first allow those who are opposed to a proposal to speak, and then those who are in favor. We ask that each side limit their comments to 15 minutes, but we always want to make sure everyone is heard who needs to be heard. If more than one person chooses to speak, we ask that you allocate your time so it doesn't exceed 15 minutes. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open, and ask if there's, and we also ask no cheering, no jeering, no, this is not a popularity contest. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the...
I've got a question. I was having a hard time here. Is he proposing a, to install, or to...
He's to come down to the building and speak to us.
Build a Dollar General in that location? I was having a hard time here. Is that what you're...
Yeah, the proposal is, there will be a Dollar General built in that location. But the actual proposal is for annexation to get them sewer.
Which is the company allowing them to use city waters and stuff like that?
Thank you. I've asked if anyone wanted to speak for this proposal, did I?
Yes.
Well, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I would move approval of the voluntary annexation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lael, second by Mrs. Patton. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Second public hearing this evening, I'll ask the city's community development manager, David Leonetti, to come to podium. Mr. Leonetti will present to the council the US Department of Housing and Urban Development required report called the Community Annual Consolidated, excuse me, Annual Performance Evaluation Report, or acronym CAPER, which is a requirement of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. As Mr. Berry said, I'm here to very briefly present to you the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. We call it the CAPER for short. This is a report that is required of all entitlement communities that receive community development block grant funding. And as you all know, we are an entitlement recipient and have been since, I believe, 1982. Basically, what this report is, is an explanation and evaluation of all the money that we spent on our community development activities during the past fiscal year. So July 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2013, is what this, the activities that this report covers. Over that time period, the city spent, all of the exact figures are in your packets, too. I'm going to kind of speak a little bit more in just approximations. The city spent $470,555.91 in CDBG funds during fiscal year 1213. In terms of what we spent that money on, housing rehabilitation accounted for a little over $100,000 of our, roughly $104,000 of our spending. That included seven homes being rehabilitated, and it also included an additional three homes that were rehabilitated with revolving loan that is given to Habitat for Humanity each year. So really, 10 total homes were rehabbed for that $104,000. $22,000 of our funding went towards the city's Down Payment Assistance Program, which provides eligible first-time homebuyers an interest-free deferred loan that is, that sits as a second mortgage on their houses in order to lower the principal payment on those and make those a little bit more affordable. That enabled us to help seven first-time homebuyers achieve homeownership during the fiscal year 1213. Roughly $55,000 was used for the purchase of a home for rehab. That house has gone out to bid and will be rehabbed during the fall, and then that house will be then resold to a first-time homebuyer, or a low and moderate income homebuyer. It doesn't necessarily have to be a first-time homebuyer. The city also, as you all know, operates a public services initiative every year by granting funds to nonprofits. There were five nonprofits that were assisted during the fiscal year. The City of Refuge received a little over $3,000 to help run an after-school program in the Ridgeview community. Exodus Homes received roughly $14,600 in order to provide employment and transportation coordination services for their substance abuse counseling program, that is residential substance abuse program that's geared towards homeless and incarcerated, and previously incarcerated persons suffering from substance abuse issues. The Hickory Soup Kitchen received $12,500 in order to help defray their operating costs. Alpha, which is AIDS Leadership Foothills Area Alliance, I'm terrible at remembering that acronym, I think I just butchered it. But they received a grant for $12,000 to provide case management services for persons living with HIV and AIDS within our community. And Cooperative Christian Ministries received a grant for $8,200 to provide prescription drugs through their health clinic for low and moderate income individuals. The other projects that were undertaken with funds during this time period, we had three public facility projects. First was not necessarily a project yet, more of an acquisition, but it was a $100,000 loan to the Hickory Soup Kitchen to assist in their purchase of a building that will be eventually used as an expanded facility for their operations. Approximately $38,000 was used to construct a parking lot within the Ridgeview community behind the former Ridgeview Public Library that's currently in the process of being redeveloped into a neighborhood center. So this parking lot's going to be used for, to provide parking for that, as well as probably some of the other businesses and homes in the immediate vicinity. And then approximately $23,000 was used to construct roughly 1,100 square, linear feet of sidewalk running along Main Avenue Southeast from Sixth Street Place to Eighth Street Southeast. And then the other activities undertaken was just program administration, which was roughly $73,000, and some advertising of fair housing, which was about $819. We ran some ads in the newspaper informing citizens of their fair housing rights. That concludes all of our activities that were included in the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I now declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak against this report. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this report? I'll ask, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried.
Next item for consideration is a departmental report, and I'll ask the city's Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Mac McLeod, to come to the podium and present a purchase agreement in the amount of $710,000 to provide lighting at the soccer fields at the Henry Fork River Regional Recreation Park. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, good evening. I'd like to spend a few minutes with you tonight discussing approval of a purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting. And the request before you tonight is your consideration and approval on first reading of a purchase agreement with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of $710,000 for the purchase and installation of soccer field lights in Henry Fork River Regional Recreation Park. What I'd like to do, give you a little, little history of what brought us, what brought us to this point. The park opened in 2000, and currently, we have seven existing soccer fields with an eighth field that's currently under, under construction. Lights were installed on Field Number One, which is our, which is our premier field, in 2001, using Musco Sports Lighting equipment. Field Number One is designated as a game-only field, which really prohibits its use for any, for any practices. So practice and game usage on the remaining six of its fields is very limited during the fall, both the fall and the spring seasons. The park has been a home playing site for the Catawba Valley Youth Soccer Association, more commonly known as CBYSA, since 2001, and CBYSA actually contributed $163,000 toward the development of the park. And actually, our, the city's partnership with Catawba Valley Youth Soccer Association actually goes back further than that when Catawba Valley Blasts Soccer Club first formed, and then there was the Uniform Heat, which were two separate organizations, both played, played games at various places out of Neal Clark. And in 1998, both organizations came together and formed the Catawba Valley Youth Soccer Association. So we've been a partner with CBYSA for, you know, going on almost 17 years now. CBYSA projects that are held at Neal Clark Junior Recreation Park for the majority of both the fall and spring soccer season, simply to find they, at that complex, we have, we have four, we have four lighted, four lighted soccer fields. What the project before you tonight will do, will upgrade the existing lights on Field Number One, basically bringing those lights, which are, which are almost 14 years old, up to the current technology that we proposed on Fields Two, Four, and Five. Just to give you, just to try and give you a little layout. This is, this is Field Number One, which I mentioned, which I mentioned earlier. It is the only, the only lighter field we have. What we're lighting is also, we're going, would propose to upgrade the lights on Field Number One, install lights on Field Number Two, Four, Five, and Six. The plans are, is to basically piggyback Field Four, we will add lights onto the existing poles on Field One that'll take care of, of half of Field Four. Likewise, we'll add, we'll add lights, piggyback the lights on Field Four to take care of half of Field, half of Field Five. So it's a total of 12 additional poles that we'll, we'll be installing. Just a little bit about the purchase and installation. Purchase is being accomplished through an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting through the inter-local purchasing systems, but are known as TIPS-TAPs. And TIPS-TAP provides purchasing co-ops that are beneficial to both vendors and members by meeting all competitive bidding requirements. There's no cost for the membership to the city of Hickory, nor does it obligate the city of Hickory to purchase through the co-op. City council, at your June 14th meeting, approved membership into, into the TIPS- City Council at your June 14th meeting approved membership into the TIPS-TAPS program. Musco is providing not only the purchase and installation of equipment, but also the design and the layout for all five fields. All five fields will be lighted to 30-foot candles for 25 years, which are guaranteed light levels for those 25 years throughout 10,000 hours of use. And then all five fields are covered under Musco's 25-year warranty with no field light maintenance cost for those 25 years, which means covered under that warranty are the poles, the fixtures, the lamps, and the ballast are all covered under the warranty. Our target completion date is February 15, 2014. That's really just, that's contingent on weather. We hope to get it done for us, just contingent on weather. So what are the opportunities that come about with the lighting of these fields? Well, you can see a commitment by CBYSA of $125,000 towards the purchase and installation of soccer field lights. So we continue our partnership with CBYSA. The City of Hickory's $585,000 cost share is appropriated in our current fiscal year. What the partnership with CBYSA does is that this project, the purchase and installation, is not totally dependent on public dollars for the project. All CBYSA functions will then be relocated to Henry Fork. We'll move all functions there. What this does, it allows for much-needed space at Neal Clark for our growing youth lacrosse program. Right now, both programs have to share the four fields out of Neal Clark. And I'm gonna tell you, if you've ever been out there, parking gets to be interesting, but also with the number of kids out there, lacrosse balls and soccer balls flying back and forth, it does get interesting, the fields do get heavily used. What it also does is live the expansion of our bumblebee soccer program, which we play out of Henry Fork. We've been out there for probably five years or so. It's our five and six-year-old program. Currently, what we have to do, we have to shorten that, we have to shorten that program to follow along when we get into the fall season simply because of darkness. With the lights on the field, we won't have to do that anymore and really won't have to keep them on one field. We can expand, we can expand their usage. It also allows for the extension of the operating hours for the park, for those patrons that currently utilize the paved walking trails at the park. Right now, our park hours are based on, based on time of the year, currently close at eight o'clock. It eventually gets back to six o'clock. What this allows to do is keep, extend those hours longer and also allow other users of the park to take advantage of it. What it does is also allow for potential growth of tournament plays. We currently have three major events that are held out at the complex. The Rotary Club of Lake Hickory's Galaxy Shootout Soccer Tournament, which is held in April of every year. CBYSA has an Autumn Blast Soccer Tournament, which is held in November of every year. And then this past May, Foothills Lacrosse had a Rage by the River Lacrosse Tournament. We had 35, about 35 teams there at the complex for lacrosse tournament. So basically just gives those programs and those tournaments an opportunity to expand. So that. Staff recommends approval of the purchase and agreement with Musco Sports Lighting for the purchase and installation of soccer field lights at Henry Fork River Regional Recreation Park. We more than have to answer any questions anyone has.
Now, how did our property out there fare in the big rains?
Flooded. We were about, we were about.
It's all floodplain, yeah.
We've had two. We've been, first time, we were about eight feet underwater. Second time, we were about six, we were about six feet underwater out there. We just know every time, every time we get heavy rains, we just anticipate the fields. Really, they hold up, they hold up good. Really, if there's anything that comes out of that is, once we just clean all the debris off, we actually leave, we actually leave the silt on the fields and let it perk down. We use it, we use it as top dressing. So that's, we take advantage of the sand that ends up on the fields.
Well, I think this is long overdue. This is an economic driver. It brings people into Hickory and that's an important factor. And in a community where the conversation is about exercise, this just gives us the ability to expand these programs for all ages. I'm 100% in favor. It's a long overdue.
I agree, especially when you look at these tournaments that they have, the heads and beds of people coming here, they stay, they spend their money and it's the wonderful economic driver here.
Yeah, our Rotary Tournament had the, we got shootout and we, it sometimes had 80 and 90 teams and you think of 14 kids on a team, parents, maybe grandparents and, I mean, most of the hotel rooms are full in our area. Yeah, so it's, that's good.
Is the electrical for that all underground and is that part of the deal?
Yes, sir. It's all underground. Everything's underground. Everything's underground. It's a total, it's a total turnkey, turnkey project.
And also, are those fields exclusive for soccer?
No, sir. No, sir. We play lacrosse, we play lacrosse on there. Like I said, we have the tournament play. We've had, we've used them, they've been used for ultimate frisbee before. Their primary has been soccer, but they've been, we have a, you come out there for annual Easter egg hunt, you know, we have 20,000 eggs on those soccer fields every, you know, every Easter. So they're used for other things besides soccer.
I just want to make that point that they are versatile and they can be used for other things.
Yes, sir.
This move, all of, you said the soccer associations will all be out here, will then, out at Neal Clark, will that be left just for lacrosse or other soccer?
It'll be, what'll happen in the fall, in the fall, we run our fall program in the fall. What it allowed during the spring is youth lacrosse, to actually have dedicated field space. Right now, they're having to, during the spring, they have to share with CBYSA because we have a priority use agreement. So they have to share fields. What this is gonna do, you take the number of kids we got lacrosse, they're basically right now having to double up, double up on fields. It's basically, they're gonna be able to increase going from two to four fields that we can run, we can run our lacrosse program on. And that is Neal Clark and that is their practice and game, game location. And also what it's gonna do is it's gonna help us out from turf grass management standpoint, the amount of use we get out of Neal Clark. We basically, you know, the grass does get stressed, gets a lot of wear and tear at Neal Clark. So what this will do will also help us take some load off of those four existing fields.
Is there anywhere else in the uniform that has anything that compares to this?
We probably, Morganton has Catawba River Soccer Complex, Lenore has the complex, probably, they don't have as many fields as, you know, as we do. When we were, when we were first designing this, we were the, actually, when it was first built, we were the actually only soccer complex between Winston-Salem and Asheville. And we get a lot of, and one unique thing we get, we get a lot of requests from other clubs from those same areas to come and play in Hickory due to the driving, just to save on, you know, save those costs. So we are what's called a neutral field location site. So we get a lot of non-CBYSA teams that want to come here, because it's a central location. If you've got a team from Charlotte that has to play a team out of Asheville, Hendersonville, so to cut down on that, on that drive, they'll contact us and we'll work out an agreement where we can make one of our fields available for them. Just helping, helping both of those associations out. That's just example, it comes up really every fall and spring season.
Well, it's also a facility that our people deserve, the young soccer players, and it's the kind of facility that young parents and potential young parents look at in a city. I make a motion that we approve this purchase agreement.
Second by Mrs. Patton, Mrs. Fox.
Second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Next department report, I'll ask the city's code enforcement supervisor, Mr. Bobby Baker, to come to the podium. As y'all will recall, several years ago, city council wanted to make a concerted effort in code enforcement and created the code enforcement entity in the police department. It has since expanded a little bit in staff and annually, we asked Mr. Baker to come to city council and give you an update on the, on the efforts of the enforcement unit. Mr. Baker.
Mayor Wright, council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crone, thank you for letting me speak tonight. And even though this is the annual report, I would like to say that we are going into our sixth year and time flies when you're having fun. I'd also like to mention that we, as a unit, appreciate the political will that both council and city management has extended to the unit, because with the task that we have is sometimes unpleasant and it takes a lot of effort to get things done. So we do appreciate that as a unit. The presentation will focus on fiscal year 2012, 2013, but will also preview some trends that are coming up in the near future. Performance measures are the first thing that we look at and I guess in any city department, those numbers are something that measures your success. Actually, in what we do, the performance measures are a little difficult to interpret, simply because from the beginning, we knew that every year that they were going to increase to a point that we hoped that they peaked. And then just simply from the presence of the code enforcement unit, that those numbers would start to decline, that people would start taking the wrong incentive to abate their issues without us having to actually create violation letters and make them do so. So you will see that in 2012 and 13, the numbers are not as high as they were in previous years. There are some contributing factors to that as well. Number one being that we were going through almost a rebuilding with our team last year. We had some early retirements and of course, our folks take a little bit of time to train to get them proficient at what they do. But we still had a very successful year. The number of cases, 553. Minimum housing cases, we'll bring that up a little bit later, we had 72. Useance cases, 481. The 211 cases per officer is actually up from the previous year. So the officers that were on duty were actually carrying more cases simply because they had to, but our personnel was down a little bit during the year. The most important number that you see up there is the 96%. That's a very, very important number. And we'll see in a couple of slides later on that the 96% represent all of the cases that we deal with that are owner-abated. That is a great deal of savings for the taxpayer of the City of Hickory. And I'll come back to that number in just a little bit. Now, this is just a demolition comparison. We do a myriad of things as far as what our task actually is, but the most visible thing that we do and probably the most impact are the demolitions. Even though that we have helped, our unit has been a model unit within the state and has had a lot of recognition. And we have helped a lot of units get started within the state. The unit that we use as a benchmark is the Concord Code Enforcement Unit. They have doubled the officers that we do. They have a similar protocol for what we try to operate under. And the comparison of demolitions is, of course, ours is on the left, theirs is on the right. In the five years that we have been at the police department, there's been a total of 176 demolitions. Now, you'll see that the percentage there of owner-abated is 97%. The one in the previous slide was 96%. This is just the demolition aspect. You also see that Concord's owner-abated percentage is 65%. Their budget for demolitions is over $100,000 a year. Ours is $20,000 a year. And that's a good thing in a way in the fact that it gives us a great deal of incentive to make absolutely sure that these demolitions are owner-abated. Takes a little bit longer to do that sometimes, a little bit harder to do, but we've been able to accomplish that. Again, these are demolition trends and this is just a quick visual of what they're doing. Percentages are kind of hard to extract, so these are just actual numbers. Residential, you see continually went up, they came down last year from sheer numbers. The commercial demolitions that you see, and that is a number that last year, we had seven commercial demolitions. Out of the total number of demolitions, that was 16%. Last fiscal year, we had five commercial demolitions, but it was a total of 22%. So our percentage is actually going up from the commercial side of it. Owner-abated, still very high, 97%. City-abated, again, just a visual cue. Commercial demolitions, as we've said, our percentage from 2011, 2012, the seven demolitions, 16% of the total number of demolitions. Last year, it was 22% of the total demolitions. Very important statement that every one of those, 100%, had been owner-abated. Commercial demolitions average somewhere around $30,000 every time there is an abatement. They've gone extremely high in some instances. Every time that we can get the owners to abate those is, is a success in itself, because that can eat a budget up and a herd. And quite honestly, as far as first responders, as far as the detrimental aspects of those buildings, commercial buildings that have decayed, that are deteriorated, that are a hazard to life, are something that we have got to get rid of. We've got to get them down. And even though they take a lot longer in the process, preparing to send out the paperwork, it's something that we do focus on and we will continue to focus on. Calls for services, this is fairly interesting. It's something that I personally am pleased with, because it represents everything that we do. Anything that is nuisance, whether it's minimum housing, whether it's EPA issues, whether it's health and safety issues, these are how we generate our calls. 43% of those calls come from the citizens themselves. 26% of those are from law enforcement. Now, that percentage has grown from last year fairly substantially and that's also a good thing, because that means that our police officers are very aware of what we do, we work very well together. A lot of times that when they ask us to look at a property, there is criminal activity involved. So we're having a great deal of success working in a combined effort with them to work in that area. 13% is from the fire department. We try to work in every case, because most of the times when we have issues there, it is a life safety issue. We need to take care of those buildings as quickly as possible or any other issues that we have. And then 18% is proactive. There's just certain areas in the city that if you're not proactive, it doesn't get done. So we're gonna look at the photo library and one of the things that we wanted to reiterate in this is, I know you get a lot of calls from your constituents and the complaint is generally from a nuisance aspect. And the complaints usually come in that things are not happening as quickly as they think it should. What I'd like to emphasize is that we have to strictly go by whatever is in the Hickory City Code or the process that is given to us through general statute, through North Carolina Building Code and North Carolina General Statute. One example for a nuisance call would be tall grass. And it's very specific. Some people want you to come out and take care of these and not realize what's actually in the code, just as an example. Has to be less than an acre. It has to be over 12 inches, over 50% of the area, which means that if you have 40% of the lot and it's 12 feet tall and the rest of it's perfectly fine, there's very little we can do about it unless we can determine that it's just an overall nuisance for the community. When we start the process, we get the call. When we start the process, we get the call, we go investigate, takes a couple of days, we generate a violation letter, they have a minimum of 10 days to abate. We can't do anything within that 10 days. We have shortened the process by revamping our letters, and we've shortened that by about 15 days overall, but we still, when we send the initial letter out, we go ahead and put a hearing date on that. If they don't abate the violation within those 10 days, they already have a hearing date in that initial letter. So, that saves anywhere between 12 and 15 days. They will come to a hearing if they don't abate it. By Hickory City Code, they have 15 days after that hearing to abate it. All in all, it's 30 days that they have. If they do not abate it on that initial letter, they usually have about 30 days. I know that seems like a long period of time, but quite honestly, the people that are repeat offenders know the game, and they utilize this process. This is going to, what we want to do is show you a variety of what we do, and some of the aspects within what we are trying to accomplish. This doesn't look like a big deal. And I think because the photograph is taken so far away, but this was a commercial case. It was a cable supply company. They basically went bankrupt, there was foreclosure, they left everything as it was, the building was in very bad condition, the outside had, quite honestly, would be an EPA situation in the near future. This, we were able to convince the bank to abate this particular case at the cost of over $20,000, and that's one nuisance case. So, we are working with not only the owners, we're working with the banks, we're working with any kind of investment groups, propping preservation companies, anything that we can utilize to get these abated by the owner. Residential lot, in a residential neighborhood. Just one lot sitting in a residential neighborhood. Guy was a builder, he was, quite honestly, not from the city, not even really from this country, and he just utilized that lot as a dumping ground for his construction debris. That sat there for quite a while, we did have that cleaned up. This is a case some of you folks are familiar with. Unfortunately, this is a complicated nuisance case where the gentleman died in the car that you see up front. His wife was in continence, he lived in the trailer that you can't see behind. This was a total mess, and unfortunately, the children lived out of town, the owners of the property lived out of state. So, from a legal standpoint, this was just a nightmare. And what we have tried to do is, we've had to work on this very gradually, to keep the city from having some legal responsibility for this. But we have been able to clear this about 60 percent so far. We're continually trying to hammer on this.
Just a little patience.
So, it does take patience, and again, I want to say, when your constituents complain, we're trying to do the best we can with the money that we have to utilize. Of course, graffiti is still ever-present. I'll try to speed through these, but one of the things that we also do, minimum housing is an important thing that you never hear of, and it really never gets any publicity, but it's very, very important because these are life-safety issues. This was a particular case where an owner had rental property, he wanted to make the property a multi-family unit instead of a single-family unit, he removed load-bearing walls, he put several families in, you can see the children there. And that is a main girder, and that's not a photographic trick. That main girder had that much deflection on it and was very, very close to failure. If they had not called us, that could have been a disaster. We came in, we made them get an engineer letter, the engineer required substantial structural change in the facility, and everything has been abated there. This is a particular case, a little bit more unusual, where the guy, out of state, came in, bought a piece of property, took his tractor, shaved the lot, was a big mud field, and then started building a deck. You can see the deck was huge, it was going to be very hazardous, he did not have any permitting, didn't have anything from zoning, didn't have any silk fencing up. The neighbors were quite upset about it. We stopped the process, gave him stop-work order, made him clean up the nuisance aspect, which was the property. He had to take down the deck, he had to get the proper permitting, and he had to do it the correct way. So, we're dealing with a lot of different scenarios here. This is commercial demo. Just basically, you see the building in the upper-left-hand side. Lower-right-hand side is what it looks like when it's gone, and that's just a grass lot. This was factory, we're all familiar with that as well. A lot of aspects going on with that. We had issues with airborne materials, that ASHA, EPA, different kind of issues that we dealt with. This was another successful commercial demo that we had. This is, last year, we brought up a map of the city with the flags in it showing the demolitions. We were trying to show this with a little more high-tech, which is not what I'm really known for. But you can't see the yellow dots, unfortunately, on that, but that represents 176 demolitions. So, you can see where the main portion of those demolitions, and it's in the core of the city. So, when the city talks about that their goal is revitalization and to make this a better place, you can see the importance of what this unit does and the impact that we're having. 176 demolitions within that period of time is a lot of square footage, and is a lot of opportunity for revitalization. Facts and trends. The interesting fact is that we have one demolition every 10 calendar days. It's not workdays, it's every 10 calendar days, and that has been steady for five years. However, it is projected that both nuisance and demolitions will trend to a lower percentage of owner-abatement. We don't like that, and that is very important for us, and we take a great deal of pride in owner-abatement and the tools that we've been able to utilize to get owner-abatement. But unfortunately, we see that as the economy doesn't seem to get any better, that a lot of owners of property are just saying it's not worth it. The property values have declined, people are just saying, "We're walking away from these properties." And we're trying everything we can to still keep up with them, to keep up with their train of thought, and we will continue to do so, but we do think that the percentage of owner-abatement is going to decline. As far as vacant houses go, we have always had a lot of vacant properties. But one of the problems that we're seeing now is that we're having a lot of vagrancy in those vacant properties. And that is creating a lot of problems, because that is a health and safety issue. When you have folks, especially in cold weather, when you've got folks in houses that don't have power, don't have water, they have children in these homes a lot of times, they're heating with a fire in the floor, or they're heating with propane, anything that they can get their hands on. It is something that we have got to keep in the forefront and take care of very quickly. Again, a lot of this goes back to our joint effort with the patrol, with the police officers, where they're seeing the vagrancy, they're calling us right away, and we're trying to take care of this as quickly as possible. The last one, complexity of cases, as I've just described. Every year that goes on, the banks, the folks that own the property, the property preservation companies, all of them are coming up with new ways not to do things, not to spend money and to let them lay. And the complexity of these cases are getting harder every year for us to stay one step ahead of them. Doing fairly good at the time, and we will continue to do so somehow, some way. We did put up there a term called assistance triage and resolution. And one thing that we're seeing a trend for our unit is that we're having a tremendous amount of calls, and it's trending up. We're getting more calls on a regular basis of people that are just calling in where they really don't know where to go to get an answer, and they've, a lot of times, got very unusual questions and unusual problems, and they're calling us to help them resolve them. The good thing about it is, we're so familiar with all of the departments in the city and how things operate, that we never tell them it's not our job, that it's not within our purview to take care of this. We always help them, we always direct them in the right area, the right department, or we work together with those departments without just sloughing it off and, again, saying it's not our job. So, that's something that we're also making sure that we give good customer service as a unit. That's it. Any questions?
Y'all do a remarkable job, and it's really made a big difference in our city, and I thank you and your department.
Thank you.
I had one question about the owner who just continually never gets it right, never addresses it. You know, I have a particular property in mind that I've looked at for 15 years. And what does a community do with a property owner that's an absentee, that knows how to work the system, but drags down a stable street? That just continues, is there no answer, there's no end to that?
Unfortunately, from our end, unless there is some other kind of resolution. It is something that we will continually do, and for instance, if they are on the habitual offender list or the chronic violator list, that also is cyclical, because it's three violations within the previous calendar year puts you on it for the next year, and you're good for one year. Well, they're on it for one year, normally, they go ahead and take care of it during that year, but then, when the next year comes up, they're off of that list again. So, it's just one of those things that, as we go down the road, we will fine-tune our processes, and we'll bring forward to City Council things that we see that hopefully we can all work together on to stop, because what you're saying is an issue that we see on a regular basis. And those people do know the games, and they are the chronic violators.
I also have another question, and I assume that this passed the legislature about demolition and being able to put the debris at the back of a lot. I don't know where they got with that, did it pass? Because my question to you would be, is that going to burden your unit, to police, how these people put their waste at the back of the lot?
No, ma'am, actually, that has, that's really nothing new. In the past, it has always been appropriate, if it was material that was non-deteriorating, you could still compact it as long as you met certain conditions, you could still put that in a demolition site. It basically, the new criteria in that was that now they have to register that with the county tax records, so that someone coming to buy that property 10, 15 years down the road will know that there's construction debris buried there. We police that, they have to have demolition permits before they start anyway. And if we catch them doing that without the permits, they stop and they have to get them. But we always inspect those demolitions anyway.
Well, I was sitting here also thinking about your partnership with the police, and how well, when we've moved this unit to the Police Department, how well that partners with community policing, because the policemen in those packs get very acquainted with an area and see things that, you know, the normal person might not see. And I agree with Jill. I remember when we first started this discussion, and my hat is off to your group, you have done a fantastic job. I check on some of these properties in a couple neighborhoods, and there was one real problem property over in Green Park that we, you stayed after, it took some patience with that, but I went by there the other day, and the owner has abated his issues. Now, it might not be to the specification of the neighborhood, but it's not anywhere near as bad as it was.
And that is one thing that's important to note as far as your constituents, is that we can only make them abate that to minimum standards. So, and that minimum standard is the same whether it's in one locale or another locale. So, again, that is something that we can go so far, but...
Now, that's a minimum standard, that's a state standard, right?
No, ma'am, the nuisance would be from the Hickory City Code of ordinance. And if it has building issues, then that would be from the state level.
Bobby, what percentage or what number, just off the top of your head, do you think that there are out there people that are beating the system, per se?
You know, it's, as far as the percentage of the people that we deal with, it's small, but the number of cases, it's, the percentage grows, because the people that know how to beat the system are usually the people that own a lot of the properties. Rarely do we find, we do find people that just abandon properties, and that would be if it's a bank-owned property that, for instance, we had one from the Bank of Miami, and they just basically said, "You know, we're going to write this off anyway, so we don't care." So, we have to figure out a way to deal with that. But as far as nuisance goes, and these repeat offenders, quite honestly, I could name seven or eight, not a percentage, but seven or eight individuals that are 15, 20 percent of our work, as far as the nuisance aspect goes. So, you know, again...
How many properties are we talking about, do you think, just roughly?
You know, you're probably looking at 50 to 75 properties. And it is a repeat. Now, the good thing about it, we are seeing some of those properties being developed slowly.
So, all of those are still active cases?
And it is transforming, Helen. You know, some of these people are, have filed bankruptcy, some of these people have been foreclosed upon, and now those properties are going through the process of being re-acquisitioned. So, we're going to be able to deal with that now, because the people that are acquiring these properties, that has some value to them. So, we're going to be able to deal with those properties a little bit better. So, it is, and that was the whole point, this is ever-evolving. Every month, I see something new, and I thought I had seen quite a bit, but there's a new trick in every bag.
It's an interesting discussion that y'all are having, because it's almost exactly the discussion we had as staff, and we recognize that as this evolves, we will come back to you all with some adjustments and tweaks to your ordinance and to some other things that Bobby's kicking around, you know, to fine-tune it now that we've been, and it's actually kind of evolved every year for the last five years, so we'll continue to do that. Some of it is code-related, though.
It's quite impressive that we're the example for other places also.
Quite a few places. Just in the last week, I've had two additional Burlington and Troutman called to see how we do things and why not. So, that is something that makes our folks feel pretty good. But again, if it weren't for you people standing behind us, you, then I can tell you. And that's my number-one thing that I tell these, if you do not have a council or city management that has a political will to stand up for this, it won't work.
Well, I think, I think that many of us understand the high rental rates in a lot of these neighborhoods, and we understand the fragile nature, and so it becomes apparent that we have to keep this beefed up in these areas, because the folks that live in good neighborhoods, just because they have some absentee landlords, they don't deserve that, the whole neighborhood, and it spills over. It can drag a neighborhood down. And I think you've just done a commendable job since we made this move to the Police Department.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to appoint or nominate for appointment Jane Everson to the Library Advisory Board. Any other appointments?
Second.
Have a motion, the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Let's carry it. That's carried. Matter's not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if you all would consider on your appointments, the lead meeting, which is coming up in October, you all need to designate a delegate and an alternate for the annual businessman. Of course, that meeting is here in Hickory.
And that means they need to be present for the voting session, aren't they, right?
That's right.
I mean, that's the requirement.
Yep.
Do you know when that session is?
It's...
Sunday afternoon?
Yes, it's at the very beginning of the conference.
Mr. Gess, are you going to be at that meeting?
I plan to, yes, sir.
I'll nominate Mr. Gess as our...
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Wright, second by Mrs. Patton.
Do I get to vote?
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That extension counts as a yes. Now, we need an alternate?
Need an alternate, correct.
Okay, I'll nominate myself as the alternate since I think I'm going to be there. Got a second from Mr. Meisner. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. General comments? Couple things last week I wanted to mention. Mr. Berry and Mr. Meisner and I met with representatives of Lenora Ryan University. I didn't think about you all being here tonight, but we want to, we want to create an atmosphere where Hickory is more of a college town. And people say LR is Hickory and Hickory's LR, and they think all this in the same sentence. You know, we were, the city of Hickory was 18 years old when LR was founded, and now LR is ripe old 112 years old. So we sort of grew up together, and although we've had very close ties over the years, I think we need to be more of a college town. I don't see a downside to that, and if it helps LR get students and it helps our merchants sell merchandise to students, I don't see how that's anything but a win-win. So Mr. Meisner, as an alum of LR, has agreed to be our primary liaison with the university, and the university's identifying likewise someone to be the primary liaison. And who knows, some of you out there, some of you students, might be asked to serve on our Town and Gown, College Town Committee, whatever we decide to call it. Secondly, last week, we had, we proclaimed, we had a resolution concerning the 50th Anniversary March and the "I Have a Dream" speech. That was a momentous time in the history of this country, and your council felt that that would be appropriate, that we have a resolution that's a permanent record. That resolution has been framed and placed in the Ridgeview Library. Any other general comments?
Just that the concerts start under the sales again Friday night. Come down and enjoy.
The, I thought we had a very successful legislative event last Thursday. I compliment City Manager's Office in Yade specifically for a well-attended function. And I was surprised at, frankly, at the, at the number of other municipalities in our area that showed up, as well as a lot of legislators that don't necessarily touch the municipal boundaries of the city of Hickory. So I just wanted to make that shout-out.
Yeah, I think the collaborative effort between us as municipalities and our representatives came through. I had, and this was a public meeting. Everyone was invited to attend. I did have an email somewhat critical, Law Blitzer, and perhaps of Hickory for hosting an event like that, and so I just asked those people to come to the meeting and express their opinions there at the meeting. I don't know if any of them showed up, but they were invited. Anything else before we go to closed session? Do you have a motion to go into closed session? Motion by Mr. Gess, second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Thank you all for being here. Particularly, thank the scouts and the Lenora Ryan kids.